We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good, good evening to an early start here than usual. We're starting at 5:30 tonight, so it's great to have everybody here. Look at there, Jay's walking in as we're getting started. All right. Please remember as we get started with our agenda to remember our mission and our vision and our core values as we make decisions throughout the evening. But we do have a, we do have a quorum here with Jay. No hearing of delegations. At this point, no communications to the board, so we wouldn't need a motion to approve the agenda being changed up a little bit. We won't be doing the closed session at the end. We'll do that in February since we do have kind of just a smaller board tonight. So with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Janie, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. We'll move into the consent items, which you all should have received with your package earlier on Friday. And I know you do have a few more invoices and bills that are listed at your, at your area. So please look those over and if you have any questions. Joe, if you have anything you wanted to add yet at this point or talk in yours?
Consent items and finances are all routine for the month. Revenues continue to run higher than our expenditures, which is great. We're about a million ahead at this point, which is expected. You know, we believe will be about breakeven this year. So everything looks, looks really good, headed in that direction.
All right. Sure we've been?
And we'll review some finances as part of my report, too.
Any questions with consent items you received? Hearing none, I'd need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thanks, Lanny. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items approved. All right, we'll go right into your report, Joe, with financial review.
Like I said, our revenues versus expenditures continue to look good for fiscal year '25, as well as forecasted through the five years. On the, the bar graph, the, the blue represents revenues and the red represents expenditures. So we are forecasted to bring in slightly more than we spend for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26. Next year, it, it will be more than that. We are expecting a surplus for that, that year as well as '27. And that, that's part of, you know, we, we've talked a lot about our fund balance. We'll continue to grow with those large revenue years until some of that, those sharing dollars go away. And then we know that we're going to deficit spend for fiscal year '28 and '29, and we'll continue to make adjustments to, to balance that out. So the bar graph really just shows what, what we've talked about, that expenses look really good. We know they're going to balance out in the, in the coming years, but those are things that we've prepared for. We will have a healthy enough fund balance to deficit spend, and that's what the purple bar graph represents. Our fund balance currently is $4.2 million. It, it will grow to over $5.7 million during fiscal year '27. Then we'll deficit spend and really by 2030, putting us back to exactly where we are right now. So, so healthy and a really good position. And we're prepared for those changes and revenues that, that we know are going to happen down the road. So we, we feel really good about the, the changes that we made and will continue to make that. In these forecasts, some things that, you know, our unspent authorized budget will remain above the board goal of 10%. Actually, the lowest it gets in all these projections is 18%. It'll fall into the ISB recommendation of 15 to 25. Some assumptions that we have made in all of these forecasts is that we will decrease at least 20 students next year. Remember, we had a similar assumption in last year's model that we were, because when we look at our graduates going out and our, our kids coming into kindergarten, that's what those numbers tell us. Now, the reality was we had 36 new students or 36 more students in our certified count this year. That could happen, but there's nothing to, to tell us that's going to. So we'll continue to conservatively make the models with the numbers that we actually have. So we're again forecasting a drop in enrollment for next year. We'll see if that, that happens or not. If it doesn't, these numbers just look better. You know, they, they just look better than that. This also, these models make the assumption that 18 teachers will retire over the next three years and all 18 of those will, will be replaced. Again, that's our conservative way of looking at that. We look at every teacher that retires every single year on is that position needed to be replaced or not? If not, again, that would be a savings. That would make those numbers look better. This forecast also keeps the cash reserve levy in place at $1.1 million per year, which is our special ed deficit, which is why that, that number's like that. The forecast model assumes a minimum of a 3% salary increase and the forecast assumes an annual supplemental state aid increase of 2%. Now, I'm very, very hopeful that it's not 2%. Last year was 2.5. The year before was 3, which is the only time in the last 12 years that it's been above 2.5. So we conservatively are, are looking at 2%, but are hopeful that, that'll be more. So there, there are a number of assumptions in there that could change our finances for the good, but we, we don't, we don't forecast that way. We forecast in a more conservative way than, than to do that. So that, that, that's just a kind of a recap of our, our finances. Nothing different than when we, we've done that to start the year or done that in the summer, but to, to hold, to show you that we're, we're holding that as, as we predicted and how that looks for the years coming.
So if we maintain our 20, or don't lose approximately 18 students a year, we can look to add staff to help create better ratios or?
Yep. You know, that would give us, you know, just shy of 200,000 per year ongoing. So that, that, that could allow us to, to add staff in areas. You know, once we get out to '28, '29, '30, we are expending more than our revenues at that point. So it could just balance that out at that time period without making any type of staffing adjustments.
Any other questions? All right. Joe, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
We'll move on to administrative reports. It does show we have one, but we have Ms. Janie Eishen with us tonight.
Janie's going to talk about our, our TPRA program, which is our apprenticeship for, for teachers, which we've had some staff members in for a number of years. Janie oversees that program for us and talk a little bit about that program, really how it works as well as the future of it, which I think is really an important piece for us.
No numbers tonight.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right. So the teacher and parent educator registered apprentice program is called TPRA. Another acronym. We love it, but that's probably what I'll refer to it as. This is, this is the clip from the Iowa Department of Education site. Intended to be an innovative pathway for current high school students and our adult parents to earn credits to become a teacher while still being able to work. I will say, we do not currently have the program of the high school students. We're just doing the parent educators. That, that could be something that we look at possibly, you know, in the future. As we were just kind of learning about it, we thought, whoa, let's just get, get one part of it done. But that, that could be an area that could increase. So the essence of it is, is these three bullets here, is that our parents continue to work full-time while taking their courses. When, when kind of asked about some things, a lot of our parents do a lot of work of, of teachers. They just maybe, you know, didn't, didn't go to college to either finish a degree. A lot of them started degrees. And so it, it allows them to still be able to work, which is usually a barrier to being able to go on to, to obtain that teaching license. And so they're still able to work full-time. The coursework is paid for by the district and then we're reimbursed by the program, which I'll talk about a couple, where that, that reimbursement money came from. The big draw to it, though, is that you're student teaching, which is typically the barrier because who wants to take off two months, who, who can quit their job to go student teach for two months? That can still be completed while being employed. And that you also receive credit for things that you do as a parent, which is very much like a teacher in, in that kind of student teaching program of it. So that was kind of the, the crux of it. Storm Lake was actually featured, a local school, on the Department of Ed website. So I thought, this is just like a middle minute and a half video.
I choose this program because they give you a lot of opportunities. One, you're doing what you love, what is teaching. Second is they're paying for your school. Okay? They're paying for your classes, so that's like the relief from your shoulders. I'm from Mexico. I came from a town where you're going to have too much stuff. I feel it's a huge opportunity. We need educators here in more in Iowa. We need the teachers that they want to help all their kids and they just want to teach them. Initially, when I heard about the apprenticeship model, I was like, oh, that's an interesting way about, you know, method of solving your teacher shortage. And what has I really thought about it? I thought about all the ways that I have studied in the past where I would have loved to have gone to school and been able to spend half a day or a full day in a classroom and have some in the middle. Knowing that we're supporting people who should be teachers but may not ever have chosen to do that is absolutely my favorite part of this program. We're trying to find this model that mirrors a traditional model pathway without replacing old. If we replace the old, then we still have a teacher shortage crisis, right? And like, we don't want a crisis anymore. I believe it's a great opportunity. There is a lot of ways to become a teacher, but this is one route you get your experience and education at the same time. When you are working with kids, what better way to learn about what you're going to be doing than working with kids already?
So this all kind of got started, 2022 was the first kind of cohort from it. And at that point, you had to belong to a consortium because you, you couldn't just do it. You had to have, I think it was up to 20 candidates. And, and Storm Lake did do their own because they probably had enough, but we had to go together with another consortium to do it. I'll say that we, we checked all the boxes for what we had to do, but it was, it was painful. Sometimes along the way because Cherokee was the consortium that we were with. They were the fiscal agent of the grant. It, it really grew to be quite big. And so Margaret Buckston through, through Rural Schools of Iowa, I think they actually kind of ended up being the fiscal agent for it. Only certain colleges and programs were on an approved list at that time. And so we went with Western Governors University because they allow for, you know, of course, everything to be done online. They have a really interesting way of doing business. You pay, you pay for a chunk of time. You don't pay for a class, so you pay for six months and you can do as much or as little as you want to in six months. And that was really attractive to a lot of our candidates so that they could get a lot of coursework done, especially over our summer, you know, when they, they weren't working, they could get a lot done from there. So this first consortium, this was overseen by the federal government as part of ESER funds. So there was a lot of paperwork. I mean, a lot of paperwork. We, we were reimbursed money from those first three years. I think we just got that money last May? Maybe even this fall. I, I don't remember. It was, it was, it took a long time to get it. We, we do get reimbursed some of the parents' wages. So our expense was really just, but we didn't even have, have an expense. We paid for their tuition and then we were reimbursed up to $6 for that as well. The federal grant money, that actually ended this last July, but the state of Iowa has now kind of taken over the grant. And so there does continue to be a grant. It's just not housed under the federal government. So there's much less paperwork. It used to be, Lisa and I probably worked a day of, of our, of our day to get the paperwork done and we worked about five minutes last week to get it done. So a lot, lot easier. We are in a second round of grant money, TPRA 2.0, which I'll hit on in just a second. Up in this box, here's a list of people who, who joined us and they're kind of color-coded because we kind of have our, our OGs, the people who started with us. So the first three, Devon Curry, she's a parent at Bertha Godfrey. Dana Carroll, she was a parent at the middle school. Steph Metz was at the middle school and is, is now a parent at the high school. She, along with Brooke Kramer, those, those first four, they started out in the program. Brooke ended up, up going to U and I because that's where she had gotten her undergrad and just entered that program. But because that wasn't part of the consortium, we couldn't, we couldn't pay for it anymore. But she's still on a path. It's just not through TPRA. So I just want to, want to note that. And then we added Amy Schleger, this, this last school year. Dana Carroll, she's done, she's graduated. She's got her things done. She's got an official license from the state of Iowa. That, that happened right before Christmas break. And then she became employed by us in the middle school. Her, her degree was in elementary education, so she finished hers. Devon Curry is student teaching at Bertha Godfrey about right now. She will be done here this spring. Steph Metz will be student teaching. She is doing a secondary math path. So she's been taking all classes towards math. And so that's why she's been moved to, she's doing some of her parent work at the high school to get a little bit more used to that. She will student teach in the fall. And then, like I said, Brooke Kramer, she's on the Purple Pathway now, which we actually have other people in that, too, but she's still in it. She just, we just don't pay, pay for her courses for it. And then Amy is a secondary science major and she's, I think she'll actually be student teaching here next year, too. So kind of a lot of good things down, down the pike for it.
And we do have one other employee, like you mentioned, who is in the Purple Pathway, like Brooke Kramer, who will be done this spring also.
Student teaching this spring also. Yep. So we've got a couple of candidates.
She's not part of ours, but she's, she's in a similar, she does work for us.
Yep.
But is it?
Little, little different on the path. So as, if you want to go to the next one, that second round of grant money, there is a TPRA 2.0. You might see in news releases and the governor might even address it here at the start of the session. Grants were just awarded because now you don't have to become part of the consortium since this is now in the state of Iowa. But we can't, we can't be part of that because we're still in this first consortium. If that makes sense. And so we need those candidates who I showed you on that slide before, we need them to finish. And then we can kind of go our own path of what we would like to do, which is, I think what we, we'd like to do is kind of enter into what U and I does on the Purple Pathway. And so that, that next box kind of shows you, you'd have to be employed as a parent professional still. You do have to have an associate degree. So that's something that Mr. Carter and I know wanted to work on of, if we had people interested now, what could we be telling them to do? Could we be lining them up with getting an associate degree, you know, so that they could have that done? So that they could enter into this when we, when we get there. And then it's a two-year program. What's kind of cool about the Purple Pathway, one is that you get a mentor from our district who regularly meets with them. And then Kim Myers has been doing it for our two now. And this year, something that U and I has added, Kim herself actually zooms with U and I and she gets training on how to mentor them as well. So they're really, really trying to grow that program so that it's never accused of, are we lowering the bar for teachers? None of that. It's, it's still, just like if you were at U and I, just a little bit different, different way to get there. So that's kind of a feature.
Purple Pathway is currently for elementary teachers, although they are in the development of secondary pathways as well.
And that's why I hope that.
Cutting edge on this.
Yes. I hope they'll, they'll, they'll get to that. I think they will by the time we can get in on another round TPRA for it. So. So we know later in the agenda, we're talking about, you know, retirements. We know that we, we do have some thoughts to try to, to get people to possibly be candidates to fill those positions and, and kind of know that they did it through working here and, and working with our staff. All really good models.
It's kind of, it's been a good thing. We've hired, hired one. We'll have others who will be candidates for positions we have, which is exciting and, you know, training them here with our people.
We know that.
You know, Storm Lake's a different situation than ours. Our, our situation is rural Iowa. And how do you get people who work in rural Iowa? Well, have people who are here and train them to work for us. It's, it's one of the great ways to do that.
And then we might dabble in that, that high, that high school student one into a parent. That'd be a nice way to get some, some kids into that, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So.
Thank you.
Janie, thanks for all the information. All right. We'll move right into old business and you'll see that we have second readings of board policies.
Second reading, so these are the, the policies from last month in the 600 series, starting with goals and objectives for educational programs and ending with pilot experimental innovative projects. There are no changes. All of our current policies, 600 to 602 for align with the IASB recommendation. The one change is in 602.3, curriculum evaluation, where we need to change the wording of shall to is as recommended by the Iowa Association of School Board.
Make the motion to approve the second readings of 600 series board policies.
Thanks, Jay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Todd, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Second reading's approved. We'll talk a little bit about the first readings of policies for next one.
First readings start with 210.2, board meeting times change. This is not part of the recent review cycle, but our, in our organizational meeting, we did change our official meeting time from, it should be the, the, the second Monday at 7:00 to the second Monday at 5:30. 603.3, special education, no changes. It does align with the current recommendation. 603.2, summer school instruction, again, no changes. It aligns with the recommendation. 603.4, the multicultural gender fair education, no changes. 603.5, health education, no changes. 603.6, physical education, no changes. 603.7, career ed, no changes. And 603.8, teaching about religion, no changes. A lot of these, there are no changes because we've, we've found ourselves in a current review cycle and, and these things have been reviewed and we, we are up to date. The last few are 603.9, academic freedom. 603.10, global education, no changes to those, as well as 603.11, citizenship. Policy 102, there's, so here's, we, we have a few changes and these are due to changes in legislation. 102 is the equal educational opportunity. Needs to be updated to match the Iowa Association of School Board recommendation, which includes specific names of who our equity and affirmative action coordinator are. So we, we have to put the names of those people in. Also, 401.10, the equal employment opportunity. We've got to change the address of the Civil Rights Commission. 401.6, limitations to employment references, need to add volunteer language. And then 501.9, chronic absentee and truancy, update some of those terminals. So first reading on all of those, no action needed tonight.
All right. Take a chance to review those before next meeting and we'll talk a little bit more next, next month. Looks like early retirement applicants to look at.
We have five applications for early retirement this year. All of these applicants have met the qualifications as established by the program that was approved by the board earlier in the year. The five applicants are Sarah Curtis, who works in our three-year-old preschool program, Zoe Hyder in our four-year-old preschool pro, program, Julie Stein, high school counselor, Tanuki High School Art, and Marie Burkey, second grade. I do recommend the approval of these five applicants and also thank them for over 100 years of service in the Algonquin Community School District, which is, which is fantastic.
Yeah. Think about the days my kids had them either. So definitely names that have been here. All right. We need a motion then to approve the early rep, retirees.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement applications.
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Early retired applicants approved and thank them again for their years of service. Approve some field house changes, maybe not quite changes, but it is.
Changes, that's, that's a better word, a change order. These, these are not changes to the project. These are three pieces to the project that were not in the bid. They're, they're all signage. We, they are budgeted for and planned for, but just, just were not in the bid. So they'll still be paid out of the save fund and budgeted these, these in there. There's three of them. The, the first is logo signage. It's the large A that's on the front exterior on the south, south side. It will be, you know, lit and, and set out from the building. We'll, really neat and kind of showcases the, the entrance there.
Will, will be similar to what's on the retaining wall type, but?
Yeah, yeah. Backlit like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly like that. It is our A, you know, that we, that we use, but be, be really cool. The second one is also on the entrance. It's a vinyl of our Bulldog that will, you know, kind of compass all the, the glass right there. So, you know, as, as it's lit at night, you'll see that, that vinyl decal then. So that'll be something neat there. And then the last one on the north, the, the Bulldogs from the retaining wall that was incorrect, that we did not use, we are repurposing that on the north wall. So you'll see that like from McGregor. And if you've driven back there, you can see that, that north wall. This is just, we have to purchase the template for them to put that up for $326. So those are the three additions to the project that were not in the bid.
Right around $20,000 and a little bit more?
Yes. Yeah, a little over $20,000.
A little over 20, yep. Any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the changes or additions.
So moved.
Thanks. Jay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Signage approved. Going in to look at the SRO, our School Resource Officer.
School Resource Officer, Jacob Jaden, city administrators here tonight to also, if needed, talk about the city's role in, in the SRO. Over the past year and a half, we've had some great discussions with Chief Bo Miller, as well as Jacob about bringing a SRO to the school district. You know, we're always looking at what we can do to, to, to make our environment better, to create an environment that, that best meets the, the needs of our kids. And we think an SRO does that. It, it helps to improve our environment. There was some legislation that was written last year that would create some flexibility in the funding. And that didn't happen as we, we hoped it would, although we have found some flexibility in our funding to still not make this a general fund expense. This would be a management expense as other districts are currently using that same model. We've met with Chief Miller. We, we've talked with other schools that have this. Humboldt has an SRO. Spencer has an SRO. I really believe in the next year or two, almost probably every district will have, will have an SRO. And that's what we use to create the roles, the responsibilities, the memorandum of understanding and the, the agreement with the city and what that would look like. The School Resource Officer would have an estimated cost of, of $100,000. I say estimated. It could be slightly lower. It could be slightly higher depending on who would be hired and some of their experiences and what the city would offer in that contract. We would, we would pay 75% of a contract, which 75% of it would be that $100,000. There would also be some annual expenses like vehicle expense that, that's also figured in there. So rough, rough estimate to that. School safety is a big deal. There's no doubt about this. You know, there's, an SRO is not going to prevent certain things from happening. What it will do is help us respond to, to things that could happen in a school. And that's a different discussion than what we had in schools really not very long ago. But it, that's important if there were ever to be a tragic event in our school. Having an SRO help us to execute our, our plan of response would make, would make that a better response and a quicker response. And there's a lot of unfortunate research that shows us that now. Questions on the SRO?
Couple of different questions. Would this officer be utilized in extracurricular activities?
Yeah, really good question.
Concerts, bands?
Yep.
Sporting events?
Yep. We, we really, anytime we have large, large groups, we, we think the SRO would be involved. We, we need to be flexible with their hours. You think about a Friday night football game, a Friday night basketball game, a dance, you know, those types of things. I, our SRO would, would be at those. Really, their, their expected hours of work are no different than an officer who would work for, for the Algonquin force. So they might flex those in different places. They would be housed out of the high school, middle school, but they would, they would go to all of our school buildings. And I think that's an important part, that they're around our children of all ages. The Dare Program, for example, would continue from the local police, not from, from our SRO. Anything that, we have a, we have a wonderful agreement with our police, police officers. They're in our buildings all the time. They still would continue plus the SRO. This is all in addition to everything that they. This is all in addition to everything that they do for us, for us already. They could pick up shifts outside of school hours. You know, you think about maybe a Christmas break or maybe even a Saturday or something like that. They could pick those up as as scheduled with the with the police force. And then when we're not in school, such as summer, they would work as a police officer for for Algonquin, for the city of Algonquin.
I haven't talked to a lot of people in the community. What has overall general feedback or community response been to?
Anything I have has been very, very positive, very welcome. I think everyone sees this as as an addition to what we do in our in our schools. We have a lot of safety precautions in place, you know, you have to be buzzing into our building all the time. This is all in addition, this is in our buildings with our kids all the time. So I I've I've received nothing but positive feedback and I I think that's, I believe, to be expected. You know, having a an officer here with our 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 students is is a good thing and I think people see it that way.
And we will have a big impact on who's helping select that officer because I think the right person for that job is is critical.
It is critical. I think it's the whole thing. The right person to work with kids and there's certainly officers that they would be wonderful at that. We're going to sit side by side with Chief Miller and and the city and the hiring of that of that person because it's got to be the right person and that's something we've talked about in our planning and and they're right with us in that.
Good.
Yeah, sitting at the city council table, too. I mean, Bo's, Bo's presentation has been nothing but positive and now he can enhance, they can enhance their role here and just grow that. And so they're very positive on this also.
In the, what I attached, a draft, you know, there's a lot of different pieces to that. But the the duties, you know, they'd be present at the district during times of high activity, you know, certainly school, but a high activity of of events. A present on campus throughout the time during less activity, regular school days as well. They could provide security. They could observe our transportation practices, parking lots before and after school, which I think would be really, really good. They could provide classroom instruction and assistance for special programs as needed, gauge an individual small group discussion with students to establish rapport, attend parent and or faculty meetings when required by the district. They would be part of our professional development, just as a staff member. They might even provide some professional development for for our staff. They could conference with students, parents and faculty to assist with law enforcement, crime prevention, even attendance in some of those engagement meetings that we have, assist the district in developing plans and strategies. You know, we have an emergency operation plan. They would probably become the kind of the director of that plan, which includes outside sources of the school. Participate in district functions whenever possible, dress in uniform or approve variances. You know, we've talked about that. I don't know. I think I could really go either way on what that looks like, but that'll be something that we we talk about. So that kind of just, you know, those are just what could be duties, but I think helps us wrap our our head around what some, what it could look like.
And as we get this approved, the sooner, I guess, we can get started with working with the city, too, and get someone hired, there'll be some specialized training, I'm sure.
Jacob, if approved, do you have a timeline for hiring?
Yeah, we would look at getting the job posting, job description finalized here, January, February, and then getting the position posted for hire in the February, March timeframe. We do have a spot for in June with the training for School Resource Officers here in the state. We already got a spot reserved for that. We're going to open it up to internal as well as external candidates, but looking at probably that February, March is when we get that that job posted. If they can, you know, find the right person and they can get it to get started sooner, that's fine. During the summer, we've got officers that they want to take vacations, so if we need someone to to fill a shift, that works out well, but making sure they're on board by the June SRO training, get, you know, familiar with the, see if they're new to it or continue to work shifts if they're an internal hire and get started on finding the patrol officer replace and then obviously start SRO at the school in August.
Any other questions, either for Jacob or Joe?
I think we, we think we have an opportunity to have a great positive impact on our students and through this position and also building a reputation and allowing the students to have a proper respect for law enforcement as well, which is critical and I think in today's society and culture. So I I don't see anything negative if the right person is hired. It would be a huge asset and benefit to our community.
I agree, Jay. If approved tonight, Jacob and I would iron out some logistics and details of the of the understanding, description, everything that we need to 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 move forward.
Make the motion to approve the School Resource Officer.
All right, we have a motion from Jade. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. A great start to a great program, which I believe will be a great program. Approved out of state trips for talented and gifted.
Yep, seventh grade team is planning on taking seventh graders skiing in Mankato in March. Also, Mrs. Merkel and Mrs. Henderson are taking seventh and eighth grade tag students and jazz choir students to the Conhosin Dinner Theater in Minnesota in April. So I recommend the approval of those two out of state trips.
I'll make the motion to approve the out of state trips.
Thanks, Lanny. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries for the out of state trips. We've got some open enrollments to look at.
We have five open enrollment applications that have all met requirement for approval.
All right. Motion approval? Thank you, Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lanny. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Open enrollments approved. We'll look next at the resignations.
We have two resignations. Kara Ann Renneke, certainly thank her for her time as fourth grade teacher. She's getting married and her husband lives a different part of the state. And also Megan, Megan Hamilton, high school football cheer, pending suitable replacement.
So the second one's pending suitable replacement.
Make a motion to accept the resignations.
Thank you. Jay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resignations approved. Dismissal.
We have one dismissal, Jason Mosier, bus driver.
Make the motion to approve the dismissal.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So Jay was the first, Lanny was the second. Any further, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Dismissal approved. And the last part of the agenda is contracts.
Two contracts. Katie Lockey, teacher associate for Bryant Elementary, and Logan Lentz, middle school softball.
All right. Need a motion to approve the contracts.
Make a motion to approve the contracts.
Thank you. Todd, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thanks, Jay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Contracts approved. As you know, we started with it, that we'll, we'll do our closed session evaluation next month as we're three short tonight, so please come prepared. Please send me anything if you have anything ahead of time, but we'll do that next month. And at this point, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thanks, Todd.